Well, good evening and welcome to the Thursday, August 6th, 2020, meeting of the Planning Board. As a reminder, we have an important notice pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Shrewsbury Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch the meeting may do so by visiting www.shrewsburymediaconnection.org. To listen and participate in the public comment portion of this meeting, dial 1-208-718-2594 and enter the following PIN, 202900496. Please mute your device until the Chair or the Planning Board addresses your agenda item or opens the meeting to public comment. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technology means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website an audio recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. With that, I'm going to actually start the meeting by asking for a roll call. When I call your name, if you could please say "present." Mr. Thomas.
Present.
Mr. Jerry.
Present.
Mr. Rao.
Present.
Mr. Boulay is present. Mr. Gordon will be absent for this meeting, and Mr. Rotorlikas is anticipated to call in in a not-too-distant future timeframe. Additionally, we have some members from the town here, Town Planning Department and Engineering Department, so Mr. Cahill.
Present.
And Mr. Truman.
Is unable to make it this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought he was in. My apologies. With that, we'll move on to the first item to review and approve minutes. We have minutes from the March 5th, 2020, meeting and the June 4th, 2020, meeting. If there are any questions or comments, I will go around the table and ask for input. Mr. Thomas.
I have no comments, sir.
Mr. Jerry.
No comments.
And I have no comments either. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as received?
I move that we approve the minutes that were given to us for... It was what were the months, Mr.?
It's March 5th and June 4th, 2020.
March and June of 2020.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor. Onto the second item is to review and sign bills. I have two bills here, both for Graves Engineering. One is for 5-9 Centec Boulevard for $267.45. The second one is for 577 South Street, quantity of $229.95, for a total of $497.40. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the expenditures as read by the Chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor. This time, I will ask the Board if there are any Board member comments. Mr. Thomas.
No comments at this moment, sir.
Mr. Jerry.
No comments either. Thank you.
And Mr. Boulay, I have no comments to add at this time. Our first public hearing is a continued public hearing for Wyman Farms Site Plan Modification, location 935 Main Street, with a decision deadline 90 days from the close of the hearing. Do we have the applicant present?
That is correct.
Okay.
Can you identify yourself, Alex?
Yeah, I'm sorry Bernie, I was just going to. Alex Rikov, Superintendent Casa Builders and Developers, representing Wyman Farms LLC.
Okay. And Alex Rikov, can you please give us an update as to where we're at relative to this hearing?
Okay, yeah. So basically, over the past few weeks, we have had the initial review of the existing wall done by GZA. And they've cut, they came back with two different conditions, neither of which we were able to meet, unfortunately. At that point, we spoke with our engineer, Richard Bushnell, at Civil Connection. We had him do an analysis and design a new wall for the project. Upon him doing this analysis, he presented us with a new stone-strong wall. At that point, we sent it to Bernie. Bernie passed it along to GZA for a peer review on this wall. It took about, I'd say, a week or so for him to, for GZA to come back with somewhat of an approval. He came, they came back with two separate options. We could either take down the existing wall that's there, or we could put a new wall in front of the existing wall. Given the condition, given the stability of the slope in its present nature, we decided that to build a new wall in front of the existing wall would be a better option for us. So we have, over the past week, uploaded all of the information of the new wall, the design criteria, the new plot plan showing where the wall is going to be in relation to the buildings in relation to the old wall. And I have uploaded the document to the permitting system. Since I have done that last Wednesday, I've received, I think, two separate requests for additional information, both of which I have uploaded to the permitting system. Once all the additional information was uploaded to the system, the Building Department came back with a 10-item punch list. I believe that was this Tuesday. I spoke with the design engineer and my team. We came back with a response for all of the 10 items. I uploaded them to the permitting system this morning. I believe all of the answers are in the permitting system. I think that to move forward from here, all we need is a Building Department approval and a Conservation approval. We would like to get going on this matter as soon as possible. We've had the blocks for the wall waiting to be approved by the town. And we believe that it's about a one-week project for us to build the new wall and to kind of put this whole thing to rest.
Okay. And when are you scheduled to be in front of Conservation?
I really don't think it's a matter to put in front of Conservation. Nothing has been altered that severely that I think it needs to be brought in front of the Board. There's one small drain that is going to handle the runoff from this wall. This wall is much different of a design than the last wall. And I think that this could easily be reviewed by the Engineering Department and approved. I do not think it is a matter that needs to be brought in front of the Conservation Board.
Okay. But before I open up, is that all you have for us right now?
Pretty much. I think, I think that all the other items were covered on the meeting. I think the only outstanding item was this wall. Am I correct in saying so, Bernie?
Yes, the Board at the last meeting, if the Board members recall, partially approved the site plan modification. So the outstanding issue was the wall issue, which route they were going to take, and then also providing the Board with an updated site plan, which you received in your packets 10 days ago, I think. So it was in your packets and the wall designs and the correspondence between the Developers' Engineer and the Peer Review Engineer also were in those packets. So all the information was there, and the way Mr. Rikov described it is accurate. So two options were presented to the Board's peer reviewer, and they gave their blessing for either one, whichever one the town agreed to with the developer, and the developer chose the the second option, which was to construct the, a new wall in front of the existing wall. And that's what you saw in the site plans before you tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Bernie. I do have a question, and it's only because it just came to mind. With the additional wall being placed in front of the existing wall, you now have a setback of only 6.5 feet on Building 17. Is that going to require any, whether it be ZVA or additional conditions, Bernie? Do you know?
No, will not. It's been reviewed by the Planning Department. The wall line is not the setback line, so there's no need for a variance. It's just a slightly bigger imposition on the eventual buyer of the property. But Building Department did not require any sort of variance or anything for that change.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. With that, I'll open up for questions from the Board. First, Mr. Thomas.
I have no questions at this moment, sir.
Okay. Mr. Jerry.
I'm wondering if there's something, given all of the sort of challenges that we've had at this location, if there's some, something we can put in here to sort of make sure that this gets done correctly? I don't know if you have any ideas, Bernie, but I'm just wondering if there's some condition we can put in, but...
Yeah, it's a good question. If you're thinking about conditions, we can certainly talk about that. So right now, I guess what I'm going to say is the public hearing is still open. So certainly deliberations, if that's something you want to talk amongst yourselves, I can certainly help you out depending on which way you're going with that. But I think let's, let's make sure before we say goodbye to Mr. Rikov, if there's any questions you have specifically for him, I think now's the time to ask him specifically to what has been proposed.
Well, that's fair. I think, especially what's proposed, I have your questions. Thank you.
Okay.
And my questions have...
Can I speak just one second on that? Board, would you mind? This is Alex Rikov.
Sure.
So regarding that, with this done, being done properly, I know that I'm, I know that I'm the builder and, you know, I'm not going to tell you everything you want to hear, but this is a construction control project. So the engineer who designed this wall is going to be present. We do have Yankee Engineering on retainer to be there for compaction testing and to witness the lifts of compaction, the filling of the stone wall. This wall is a very different system than the last one. The last wall system that was put in place was retaining that 2:1 slope, as you all, I'm sure, remember. We had to build that up in lifts and stabilize that wall as we were building the wall, fill it in with stone, compact it with gravel, fill it in with stone, and go up in, you know, 12 to 16-inch lifts. It was quite an intensive, you know, repair, a building process. This wall, these blocks are hollow, they're concrete. And basically, once they have a footing and once they're put in place, the blocks are put in place, the base course is put in place, and these, these blocks are basically filled in with stone. There's no compaction really necessary. Stone, as you may or may not know, compacts at above 95% initially upon, you know, placing. So it's really quite a bit different. So I, I just wanted to let everybody know that initially, the thing that caused this wall to fail was a subcontractor banging into it and accidentally hitting it as we were building the slope behind it. So once you take all of those unknowns out of the equation, which will not be happening in this, it leaves us with a pretty foolproof installation of this, of this new wall.
All right. Well, thank you for that input. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard? Before I open that up, I would ask that you please unmute your device, give me your name and address. I'll wait for all names and addresses to be called, and then I will come back to the names in the order I see fit. So I will leave it open to public comment at this moment. Okay. Appears that there are no public comments coming in. Therefore, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing of Wyman Farms LLC, 935 Main Street.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. At this time, I think we should take a moment and deliberate before we come up with our final vote. So I think, Tim, you had brought up a concern, so I think this is an appropriate time to weigh that.
Right. So just, Mr. Chairman, sorry to interject, Tim. Just at this time, Mr. Rikov, thank you for coming and your comments and for presenting. If you do need to go, I will be informing you of the Board's decision tomorrow in writing. And yeah, you don't have to stay on the line, I guess is what I'm saying, if you don't want to or if you can't. It's up to you. But Board is no longer accepting input, and I just want to make clear remotely that no more discussion takes place at this point between the appellant and, or the applicant and the Board. So just so long as the Board and the applicant know that, I think we're good to go.
Okay.
Thank you, Bernie, with two children, none of the age of seven, in dinnertime. I do appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Cahill. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Board, for approving us. You guys have a good night.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have a great evening, yeah.
We're going to have a discussion right now.
Well, that's fine. That's fine, but I'm going to be dropping out. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay. Bye.
Mr. Jerry.
Yeah, no, I, but I appreciate the developers' explanation of the wall, but I guess I was just a little bit concerned that we move forward with any sort of approval without some mechanism to ensure that this gets done correctly, because I don't certainly think it's in the best interest of everybody that we not have a mistake like this again. So I just didn't know if there's some condition where, you know, maybe even if, once the wall's complete, they, you know, as-built plan gets submitted or something along those lines for engineering to review prior to giving occupancy for these units.
Okay. I was thinking more in the line that what you were thinking was more of maybe an oversight while the construction was being done, but that doesn't sound like where you're at. It sounds like you're more interested in the, after it's complete, getting as-built before going forward with anything else.
Well, I just think, given the challenges that we've had on this one, it makes a lot of sense to just make sure that planning and engineering is completely comfortable with the finished product. I just want to make sure that we're comfortable with where it is so that, you know, all of the, everybody involved in this is satisfied at the end.
Okay. Mr. Thomas, do you have any comments or...?
I agree with Tim 100%. Maybe an as-built is the way to go to make sure that this is done properly. And I know Mr. Rikov is sure of being done properly, and I'm sure that they're sure that it's going to be done properly, but with all the problems we've had there, I think it makes the most sense to make sure that the town reviews it, or like I said, as-built, or whatever the case may be, however we think we should put a condition in that says that we're sure that it's done properly. What's your, what's your take on it, Mr. Boulay?
Oh, I absolutely agree. I know that we've encountered several nuances throughout the construction of this project, not only around the wall, but in other areas within the site. And I don't, I don't think Mr. Jerry are way off-base in trying to do something to help promote a, and basically, it's not a guarantee, but an oversight prior to just taking it at face value. So Bernie, I, how would we, how would we go about doing something like that? What can we do to have some measure to ensure that it happens?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. So I think first, to Mr. Rikov's point, I think what he was talking about, and I don't disagree with his point, is kind of the construction affidavit, which is more of the structural integrity of the wall itself. I think from the planning perspective, we're going to look at it for more of a site plan idea, and we did already do one of these earlier on in the process, which was to have an as-built required. We can certainly have engineering involved. So I guess what we probably do for this site would be most relevant is, or not the site, sorry, for this specific issue on the site would probably be, if you're looking for as-bills, would be to go the way of asking for an as-built that shows the, like, the location of the wall, the elevation of the wall, so that would be as part of site plan, right? So that's grading. And then I think the grading of the slope, because it's all one unit, right? It's all, it's all functioning as one system, the wall and the slope, they're not separate. So if the Board wants to condition it that way, it sounds like once the building permit signed off on in tonight's agreement, if it goes through, is that they're going to be able to move relatively quickly. So I wouldn't think that's such a burden if they can get it done in seven to 10 days, probably another two or three days to have an as-built drawn up. What I would recommend to Board members, though, is myself not being engineer. I think I'd like to ask Andy Truman, the town engineer, to weigh in on the wording of that condition and have him help me draft it exactly what it is that engineering would need in terms of details from the wall and slope for a, the as-built to be adequate, I guess is what the word I'm looking for. So that we can feel satisfied that we've received an as-built that, that reflects, you know, what it is we're looking for. And we can put it in our files and have it on the record to go along with the Developers' Engineer and their affidavit and stamp that they put on it at the end of the project. So I don't think that's an unreasonable request. We can do it as such. So I think maybe the language would have to be moved, so with your decision, move to require an as-built in accordance with requirements of the Engineering Department and kind of keep it broad, and then let Andy tomorrow, when I talk to him, have a go at drafting that. And you would see it, when you get the DocuSign decision, you would see that language that he and I have put in. But if we do it as a broad condition, so, condition, did you get that? Let me, I'm trying to make it as clear as I can, so, a condition, so...
Yeah, you're right now.
Require the as-built.
Yeah. You gave it to me one more time, Bernie. I'm trying to write it quickly.
So the condition would state something, or your motion, I should say, because the condition will be written out. So a motion to include a condition that the applicant submit an as-built for the wall and slope in accordance with engineering requirements. I'd also recommend, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, that there be some kind of mechanism to hold them to account for this. Right now, so far, we've been not releasing the certificates of occupancy for the adjacent buildings because of, out of concern of safety. I think we've done that in past decisions where we say certificate of occupancy, right, is the trigger, right? So you provide us the as-built certificates of occupancy, get released. And again, if this is a seven-day project, as Mr. Rikov attested to, then we're talking seven days, two or three days for the as-built, and they're, they're done. They can get their CO, so if you're medical for that. Yeah, I would say, so after you put required, as required by engineering, I'd put and conditioned on, or, what did I just say? For the release of the COs.
Circuit, yeah, release of COs.
To be, to be, to be submitted prior to the release of COs for adjacent dwellings, houses, buildings. You got all that, Jay? I'm sorry, that was kind of wordy.
Let's do a trial one, say what you got before you actually say it.
Yeah, say, what do you, what did you write down, Jay?
Include a condition. Let me start over. To have a condition to include as-bills with engineering's requirements prior to the release of certificate of occupancy.
Yeah, I think, I think that sounds good.
I think you word-sniffed it very well, Jay, because you had a few more words.
You did a better job than me.
I'm riding Bernie's phone deals here.
You summarized all the complicated things I said. That's good.
Is there any other comments while we continue deliberation, or are we still confident?
I have no more. I don't have any comments.
I have no more comments.
Okay. If we have no more comments, I would entertain a motion. Mr. Thomas.
I move that we authorize the clerk to execute the decision, including a condition to include an as-built for the wall in question with the Engineering Department's requirements prior to the release of any certificate of occupancy.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. Thank you. Let's go on to our next item of business. Actually, we have no more public hearings or meetings, so we are now into the, well, actually, we do. It's a continued public hearing. Do you know, has Mr. Rotorlikas chimed in yet? Mr. Cahill?
I don't know. Mr. Rotorlikas, are you on the line? No, let me send him a text. Let's, I recommend, Mr. Chairman, that we take the articles out of order and to start with number 35 and 36.
Very good. Okay. And for those in the audience, the reason this is going to be a requirement is Mr. Jerry needs to recuse himself for the first four articles, and we do need a quorum in order to make a recommendation. So we will move on to Article 35, which is dealing with the Regulation Schedule Marijuana Cultivator and Craft Marijuana Cultivator Cooperative. Is there anyone on the Board that has any comments? Mr. Thomas.
I have no comments, sir.
Mr. Jerry.
I have no comments.
Mr. Boulay has no comments. This is a public hearing, so I will open it up to public comment. Once again, I will ask if you do have a public interest to attend, please call in, leave your, give your name and, and address. And once all the names have been received, I will come back to you in order. Okay. There does not appear to be anyone in the public that is interested in adding any additional information on that. Do, I think we should probably just vote on these one at a time. What do you think, Bernie?
Yeah.
Somewhat separate from one another.
So I would, you're going to want to close the public hearing for Article 35 very specifically, and then move to have a vote to recommend. Remember, you're not approving, you're recommending on Article 35, and then...
Thank you for that clarity. So I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing on Article 35.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor. Now, we have a decision to offer a recommendation to town meeting for this article. For those that are in favor, or actually, I'll go around the table and we'll ask a question. Mr. Thomas.
I'm in favor of a recommendation of Article 35.
Mr. Jerry.
I'm in favor of the recommendation.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor of the recommendation as well. So Mr. Cahill, you're more than, I think you were the one that drafted a letter to the town meeting, which happens this Saturday, by the way.
Yes, be drafting those first thing in the morning to the clerk, so...
Thank you. We'll now move on to Article 36. The, this again is a continuation of a public hearing. Is there anyone on the Board that wishes to offer any additional comment to Article 36? Mr. Thomas.
I have no questions.
Mr. Jerry.
I have no comment on this one.
Okay. And I have no comment either. This, I'm sorry, I shouldn't explain what this is. This has to do with the Town of Shrewsbury zoning map for commercial business district. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard, please say your name and your address, and I will get back to you and, and and we'll pick them off one at a time. Okay. I'm going to take that, as there is not a public interest to add additional comments at this time. I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing for Article 36.
I move that we close the public hearing for Article 36.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. I do not believe I've gotten an indication that Mr. Rotorlikas has joined us. Um I do not believe I've gotten an indication that Mr. Rotalakis has joined us as of yet is that correct?
That is correct I did receive a text message that he is just a few minutes out so I would recommend taking. Um the agenda out of order again and moving on to new business letter A.
I agree with that assessment so for those I would like to invite. Um our special permit attended attendee that can sit on on special permit applications uh Perna Rao. You can unmute yourself now Perna you're all set to to speak your mind. You're still muted okay there you go okay so this I can hear you yes thank you.
Yeah okay.
So this is the discussion for. I'm sorry um for a special permit to provide offsite inclusionary unit for two fifty seven Main Street. I believe everyone has received a draft decision um explaining this. Um for those that in the public are unsure what's going on here the initial project. That was approved with condition would not require to have. Inclusionary housing based on the number of units that were um that were approved however there is a ongoing litigation um to change that ruling. So this is in anticipation from the um appellant to. Should their case be be won to ask for an offsite inclusionary housing for this development so this is more of a. I guess question in anticipation of something that we don't know right so.
So miss excuse me Mr. Chairman for interrupting I've got a notice uh Mr. Rotalakis is now on the call so Steve could you introduce yourself? Steve we can't hear you.
I'm on call.
Okay uh Mr. Chairman uh being sensitive to uh Mr. Rotalakis's schedule I know we just started this one but I think we should return to it and get Mr. Rotalakis's opinion on articles thirty one through thirty four.
I agree we don't have to suspend uh a a motion to suspend conversation on this right because it's not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing correct.
Okay so we can just go back now we'll go back to talk about proposed zoning bylaw changes um there are four of them. Uh Mr. Jerry will be recusing himself for these four articles um the first one is article thirty one now I believe we should probably independently discuss these is that uh.
Um I actually think you the board it's at the board's discretion but article thirty one thirty two thirty three. And thirty four are all of the articles related to the town center zoning district and the creation of the town center zoning district. So if you would like to take them and recommend them all at once um that's your pleasure or you can do it individually um.
No I I think that you're you're absolutely correct that they are all intertwined with one another so if you're going to be in favor you're going to be in favor of all and vice versa if you're not in favor you wouldn't. Um so the first I'll just explain what the four articles are article thirty one is the establishment of districts uh section three B. District intent section four table one I'm sorry section six table one use regulations. Schedule related to establishment of a town center zoning district. Article thirty two discusses area frontages yard yard and lot coverage requirements off street parking and loading areas. As well as related to the establishment of a town center zoning district. Article thirty three deals with development of sites and location of buildings and structures. Related to the establishments of a town center zoning zoning district and article thirty four. Um that includes the zoning map of the town of Shrewsbury related to the establishment of said town center zoning district. Um we've had these on um our docket for several months now um at this time I will ask the. Um board if there are any additional comments that we should do add uh Mr. Thomas.
No additional comments.
Mr. Rotalakis.
No comments.
And uh Mr. Boulay does not have any additional comments either this is a public hearing if there is anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard on either of these four articles. Again I will open it up please. Call give your name and your address and I will write them down and get back in order to uh answer your question or take your comment.
Hello.
Hello yes can I have your name please?
Yes Jason Molina thirty one Watcherset Avenue.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard? Okay I guess we'll stop it for there for right now uh Mr. Molina you are recognized um please ask your question or comment.
Sure thank you um so again this is a Molina and I'm pretty excited about articles uh related to the zoning uh town center uh amendments. Um I think it's going to in inject um uh definitely some uh good development in our town center revitalize some spaces that um certainly there's a lot of vacancies that are currently existing there. Uh but and nevertheless I do have some concerns with the the town center zoning uh boundaries as they're defined. Uh so I'll ask my questions in that regard um do you mind if I ask a couple of questions?
Nope by all means.
Good thank you um one is uh could you could you please explain the the rationale for the inclusion of properties that are public buildings today? Uh like the fire station our library uh common I know that while it. We normally think of them as being part of town center for purposes of what the town center district would do and and allow. Um I'm ju- it's just a little bit confusing why overlay those buildings when it 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 would seem like it's an encouragement to not have those buildings in those spaces. Can you can you explain on that regard?
Um I'll ask Mr. Cahill to weigh in at this point I I believe it's more not necessarily what's on. The uh property today but basically it's in a landmass area and if you were to carve out. Certain parcels that may be a bit more confusing but that's just my take on it uh Mr. Cahill.
Yeah I think uh thank you Mr. Chairman I think you're actually um pretty close to the mark um was the idea was to keep it. Socially and economically cohesive of a town center district um so I'm not for example anticipating any development at the fire station for example um. Were the fire station to move like in fifty years' time um could someone potentially develop under the town center zoning districts? Potentially if the town decided to sell off that land so um I'm not too concerned about um development on things like the town common or over the. Um fire department we uh some of the initial drafts actually did not have um those lots included but um. The more we looked at it the more feedback we got we decided to include them to um like I said make it more of a cohesive. Town center and not to cherry pick parts out of it um just because we felt that they may not be developed um the idea was to create a. Totally cohesive town center and um in the purposes of the town center zoning district itself we actually say the purpose of it is to create a. Culturally and socially and economic um cohesive town center like that is the purpose of it so we included those um and. Yeah for those very reasons.
Okay thank you uh Mr. Molina you have another question?
Uh yes and follow up to that um so the the reason for the for the question is um is twofold one is um you know. Something like a count town common while very unlikely for a town to to go out there and say well you know if a developer came in and offered a significant amount of money. Uh to the town that uh that we couldn't refuse uh that that puts the town common um. At at a at a risk there um but even more so as a member of of the first congressional church next door to it. Um that that also strikes me as an as uh too big of a risk to our historical buildings in town. Um should you know as the current trends go with a lot of religious buildings where memberships you know dive down and. Uh you know a developer coming in and offering a substantial amount of money to have the church membership relocate. Um could could pose a threat to the Shrewsbury's first meeting house and um you know that really. Brings me into thought about the historical nature of our of our town I know that the town center um. District is is attempting to also make keep up with a historic aspect and historic feel. Uh but there is no better way to keep us historic field than actually have historic buildings present in there um. I I do agree that you know trying to have some of the Maple Avenue buildings. Fall more in line with the historical character and and I think it's great opportunities great opportunities. Um I I just have a particular question you know issue with some of the. Particular parcels that are within included in within this that are of historic nature some of them are in the state register uh for historic places. Um this this to me so the question here is. I know that today we do not have a demolition bylaw which some folks in town including myself are would be looking to to have raised if um. It's either it's either the boundaries were redrawn. At a future time to not include some particular parcels that are on the state register or a demolition bylaw come into play. Um to to ensure that some of these properties have a fair chance of being preserved um with developers that have an interest in preserving that. Um the planning board does not have the the authority at this point to look at a project proposal based on historical characteristics is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay so that's that's where that's where my concern lies um. It is by not having that demo delay thank you.
And 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 I'll just answer a couple of the points that you brought up in in terms of the town center um I know as uh. As a member of the master plan committee back in I guess twenty sixteen or so that was identified as something that the town is um. Encouraged to keep as is as close to as is as it can be so. Regardless of of whatever developer may come in with money I think it would be a hard sell to who's ever in. The decision making at that point for the town to to turn that over but like anything else it's possible right um.
Mr. Chairman I don't mean to interject I know that Mr. Rotalakis is uh on a tight deadline here um. I can answer Mr. Molina's questions I think briefly and then um I think we need to move for a recommendation I hate to be that way but um. Mr. Rotalakis like I said is on a very tight schedule this evening so um.
Mr. Cahill just one thing this is Steve this is Steve Rotalakis the last year.
Okay.
Uh there's one other issue too just uh I am on a tight schedule um I think Mr. Molina raises uh some interesting points but I think they're just a little bit too speculative. Um. For us to you know. To try to incorporate within uh uh a any protection at this point. Uh with respect to the uh town center zoning district uh bylaw amendments but you know they are they are interesting fair points. Uh but also I think my recollection is that uh the title to uh the town common is 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 somewhat muddled. So I I would think that uh it would be difficult uh for any developer to come in and and try to uh. Purchase the town common because I I I don't think it's clear entirely clear who owns it who it potentially would revert to. So you know they're interesting points but you know again uh.
Yeah I think.
I think we have to move this forward with respect to this zoning district.
I just want to say one real quick thing uh Mr. Chairman thank you for that Stephen um I think Mr. Molina does raise a lot of good points. Um is that we have um honestly on the front burner but we are certainly um in talks with I spoke with uh Paul Schwab of the uh Historical Commission this morning. We had a long conversation a very productive conversation and we would like to incorporate some kind of historical. Feature something um in the town center zoning district it's just that the language that we had originally come up with. Um was considered far too general by the historic district commission um so I uh suggested. To Paul and I hope to bring this to the historic district commission as well that this fall looking towards next year. We really talk about some language that we can put into this town center district it's certainly not meant to be a leave historic history behind quite the opposite I mean we want to incorporate. New build development into the existing historical building so it's just it's not a question of do we want to do it it's how are we going to do it and how can we do it the best way? So um I don't I just and again as I said before this town center zoning district it's not written in stone it's a living document and as we. We find and discover things that we want to change about it or make it better um we certainly can do that and I'm absolutely not opposed to it so I just want to leave it there and uh. Let you have it back Mr. Chairman.
Now thank you Mr. Cahill is there anyone else in the audiences that wishes to be heard? Take that as a no I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I move that we close the hearing.
With with respect to both uh for all articles thirty one thirty two thirty three and thirty four Steve.
Correct uh I move that we close the public hearing relative to articles thirty one thirty two thirty three and thirty four inclusive.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor Mr. Thomas?
In favor.
Mr. Rotalakis.
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor for sending a recommendation for all four articles to town meeting. Thank you Steve for calling in I know you had a very busy. It's just a recommendation correct.
No no but we just closed it now we have to vote.
Oh I apologize.
Yeah.
Thank you for that Steve uh.
But I would I would move that we uh recommend articles thirty one thirty two thirty three and thirty four inclusive to the town meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor Mr. Thomas?
In favor.
Mr. Rotalakis.
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor as well so now he can send Bernie's can send his letter and a recommendation of approval to town meeting. And again Steve thank you so much for calling in I know it was a very difficult.
Thanks for accommodating my schedule.
Okay anytime I'll talk to you later. Okay that closes out the proposed zoning bylaw changes for town meeting for tw- uh this coming Saturday I will now. Begin the conversation again Perna welcome you back into this conversation to deliberate the special permit for the offsite inclusionary unit for two fifty seven Main Street. Uh so is everyone having an opportunity to read the draft decision?
Yes.
Is there any questions or comments relative to the draft decision? Mr. Thomas.
None right now sir.
Uh Mr. Rao.
No questions Chairman.
Okay the only thing I I do want to it's not necessarily a question it's just a point I would like to make is in the findings under um group three there are uh bullets A through D. Just want to make sure that it's very clear to everyone that the location and quality of the offsite should this be approved the location and quality of offsite affordable units shall be subject to approval by the planning board. During the development review process and item D is offsite affordable units shall comply with comparatively requirements for inclusion under. K five G and preservation affordability requirements of section K five J so. In other words we just want to ensure that if if this is adopted that and and and. The unit to be made offsite uh would meet the requirements just as a unit would have been if it was onsite. Does everyone understand where I'm coming from on that one?
And it has to be approved by the planning board.
Yeah that's in the decision already I just wanted to make a point of it so that um you know there's an awful lot of language in here I just wanted to make sure that was brought up uh Mr. Cahill.
Yeah so I just wanted to clarify earlier so um the way two fifty seven Main Street was originally proposed by the uh developer was for. Multi-family units in the back and one new um single family use that would equal a a total five units and would trigger a requirement of one of them being affordable. Um the developer in this case um had requested a special permit to provide a offsite unit somewhere in town so. They could either write without any special permit they'd have to provide a unit onsite. Um we have special permits that are allowed to be requested for either giving us a a fee in lieu of right a payment or you can um. Uh offer to provide an offsite unit um as Mr. Chairman just said um they can if. Under an offsite unit the board does have to review what that offsite unit looks like it has to be comparable in terms of size quality so on and so forth so we can't. If someone's billing in other words let me give you a very quick example a two thousand square foot uh condominium and they say I'm going to give you um. A four hundred square foot uh a condominium across town we're going to say that's not comparable right so this just ensures that. Uh as uh Chairman Boulay said earlier as well is that. The way the board actually approved the decision was to actually condition it that there would only be two multi-family units in the back. Um that was appealed to uh the land court um to see if the land court will uphold the board's decision or not and those conditions. Um if it upholds the board's decisions they're actually not going to owe the town anything because they'll be under the threshold for needing to provide one. So if they overturn the board's decision and they are allowed to go ahead with five total new units they would require um one so. If the board in other words if land court upholds the board's conditions whatever you decide tonight will be besides the point because it really won't matter. Um as I said to uh Chairman Boulay and I spoke um a few days ago as I said to him on this specific matter is is that um I know the board has been eager to see. New units built rather than fee and lose provided to the board um and this we've not done one of these before um. Um and this, we've not done one of these before, um at least that I'm aware of through looking through our documents. So it would be a first time for the board, but I did put all of those um conditions uh in the decision that the the applicant would be required to go through those motions and to provide. So he'd have to come back to the board, not as a public hearing, but for you to review the documents and to um vote to approve them, um if that makes sense. So that's kind of where we're at tonight. So it's up to the board's discretion. I'm kind of uh supportive either way, whatever the board wants to do. I don't really um I think it's it's not a bad proposal, but um it's it's really the board's ultimate call. So that's, I'm gonna leave it there and uh go back to your deliberations.
Okay, um is there anyone on the board that has any questions or additional comments that would like to add? Uh Mr. Thomas?
Not so.
Mr. Jerry?
No comments.
Mr. Rao?
No comments, Chairman.
Okay, and I have no comments either. Um so I guess we would just need to have a motion to uh prove the decision. So, Mr. Thomas, you want to give this a whirl?
I uh move that we authorize the clerk to execute a decision to provide an off-site inclusionary unit for two fifty-seven Main Street with uh approval of conditions of the planning board to that unit.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Thomas?
In favor.
Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
Mr. Rao?
In favor, Chairman.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. Thank you. Our next two items, I believe, are going to be continued. Is that correct, Mr. Cahill?
Uh, correct, Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, we did not receive payment for the uh three fourteen Grafton Street bond um in time for this evening's meeting. And for fourteen Fortune Boulevard, um engineering's really been swamped with um certain projects in town, so the field engineer and I have not had time to review fourteen Fortune Boulevard, but um we should have it done in time for the September meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Um with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we conclude tonight's meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Thomas?
In favor.
Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. Thank you all, and have a wonderful evening, and stay safe out there.